I am going to open the June 18th, 2020 Select Board Meeting. There are no announcements. We are here. First item on the schedule is a joint meeting with Town Moderator and the Finance Committee to review town meeting logistics. So, Ray, did you want to start?
Can he hear?
He can hear. I just don't think he realizes he's muted or...
Yeah, well, I don't see him talking. Hold on.
He was earlier.
I don't know what happened to this stupid thing, but I go on, you know, I'm on Zoom calls all the time and for some unknown reason.
You still can't operate them.
I still can't operate them. It just didn't, it just didn't go well. I don't know how I got to this point, but yes, go ahead, Jen.
All right. Well, we were just, you know, joint meeting to go over logistics. Usually we go through the motions, make sure everybody's comfortable with reading the motions that they have assigned. Everybody on the Select Board received those motions today, so I don't know if you've had a chance to go through.
Yeah, why don't, why don't we do this? Why don't we go through the motions first and then, then Chris can do a, an overview of logistics for Saturday and, and we should be all set. So if you want to run through the special, that's fine with me.
Okay, Tim, do you want to take us through it?
Well, it's just about assigning them at this point, right? Can we just run through who's going to read what so we all know?
Pretty much, yeah, that's what's...
And when we, if there's things we want to discuss relative to any one of those motions as they're written, we can, we can just answer questions.
Okay. Are you going to do that, Tim? You want me to do it?
No, you can do it.
Okay. I'm going to read Article One. Doreen has Article Two. Peter is Three. Ed has Four. Donna has Five. I have Six. And then we just go that pattern. Seven is Doreen, Eight is Peter. I mean, it feels silly for me to run through them. Select Board, have you guys all looked at them? Is there anyone you feel uncomfortable saying? Certainly the citizens petitions are read by the petitioner, so we don't need those. I'm looking for hands up. Does anybody have any problem with the articles that they're assigned? No?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't have a problem, but I don't know if this helps, but for the sake of logistics and time for the meeting, wouldn't it just make sense if, I mean, if none of my Select Board doesn't want to read any of the citizens petitions, I have no problem reading it. I'm just reading a petition. That's all I'm doing.
Well, on the citizens petitions, if the, if the petitioner is there, they have the right to read it. So if, if no one is there, there's two ways to look at it. One is the Board, someone from the Board can read it, or we can pass over the article.
Ray, will you need that motion in writing through the chair? Sorry.
To pass over?
No, either way.
Yeah.
So someone needs to submit one of the, the motions for the citizen petition in writing to you ahead of the motion?
No, usually at the, usually when they, when they read it, they'll submit it to me and that'll be, that'll be it. It's just that it has to match the original, the original motion, that's all.
Does anybody on this call know? I mean, we know who the petitioners are, but they've communicated, somebody's communicated that information to them?
I know I haven't, I haven't communicated that to anybody, so, but I usually, I usually speak to the petitioners before the meeting starts on Saturday, so. If you want to run down through the, through the, the annual, then we can, we can talk to them because there's one article that I want to, one citizens petitions that I do want to talk about, so. So Jen, if you want to run through the, run through the, the warrant for the annual.
Okay, the first citizens petition is Article Thirty.
No, 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 no. Run stuff from Article One. I just want everybody to know what's, you know, what's, what's going on, so. And stop at Article Six, by the way. I mean, stop at Article Five.
Article One is here, Reports of Offices, Boards, and Committees. Article Two is appoint trustee of Nelson Park and Memorial Library. Article Three is Town Share of the Net Operating Cost for Blackstone Valley. Article Four is Blackstone Valley Principal and Interest. Article Five is the Budget.
Okay, so Article Five. So normally what we do on Article Five, or it's usually Article Five or Article Six, we'll have Candy read the entire budget. So in other words, all of the line items for each, for each budget. What we're going to do this year is we're only going to read the totals. So expenses, salaries, and things like that, it's all going to be lumped into the totals, and this is only to save time because it does take a long time to read the budget. People will still be able to hold on any one of the budgets, but in the, in the essence of time and the heat, we're just going to read the total. So I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Madam Chair, can I just interject? And I guess this is more for Candy, just logistically, when we hear a hold, just, I just need to let her just not continue. So when they say Board of Selectmen total thirty-six thousand, someone says, "Hold," she should wait until we make sure we capture the hold, because I imagine we'll go through and ratify and vote for the things that are not held to raise and appropriate that amount and then come back to those held.
What, what, what we'll do is, is if they, if the school department budget of thirty-seven million dollars gets, gets a hold, we'll take that thirty-seven million dollars out of the sixty-eight million dollars. We will vote on the balance, and then we will come back to the holds as amendments to the motion or substitute motions to, to appropriate the money for those, the ones that were held, so.
Just so everybody knows, logistically, we usually have our town accountant on hand. We do not have one, so we'll be doing this between Becker and I, so it'll be, we need a little bit of time to, to hold those holds out and make a new motion with the new numbers, Ray.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, that's, so, you know, what you can do, Tim, is just make up a, you know, a template.
Yeah, we have...
Right in the, right in the school department and, yeah.
We have.
Yep, okay.
But we got to keep track of it in Excel because it's, it'll get messy.
Yes, absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we need to do a roll call?
Yes, I was just looking for the thing I have to read. I'm sorry, it's just...
No worries. It came up in the Q and A.
Something I have to read, and I was just looking for, I was just looking for it. All right. And I don't have a list, so I'm going to try to do roll call best I can, but normally I have a list and I don't have one. So I apologize. As a preliminary matter, this meeting of the Select Board, Finance Committee, and Moderator, permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Peter Carlson.
Peter Carlson's here.
Doreen Defazio.
Doreen Defazio here.
Ed Prisby.
Ed Prisby here.
Donna Stock.
Donna Stock here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Tim McInerney.
McInerney here.
Becca Meekins.
Here.
Anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. So let's, Irene Hool.
Irene Hool here.
Barry Smith.
Barry Smith here.
Matt Ofton.
Matt Ofton here.
Ray Mead.
Ray here.
Dave Robbins.
Dave's here.
Heather McHugh.
Heather McHugh here.
Sue Robbins.
Sue Robbins here.
Dan Conca. Dan, I couldn't hear you. Maybe turn your volume up. I'll come back to you. Eric Swenson.
Swenson here.
Colleen Roy.
Roy here.
Chris Mead.
Chris Mead here.
Oh, sorry, Sue. I should have said you under staff. Sue Fiaco. Sue Fiaco here. Bruce Spinning.
Bruce here.
Dan Kushner.
Dan Kushner here.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Select Board and Finance Committee and Moderator is being conducted room consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and such. The Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. For their all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the Town's website at www.grafton-ma.gov, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public asset access does not ensure public participation, participation is required by law. Did somebody say something? I'm sorry. For this meeting, we're convening by Zoom. Please note the meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We didn't, don't really, all supporting materials have been provided. Members of this body are available at the Town's website. I'm assuming the motions are available. I, I'm not sure if they are or not. We are good. We just remember to mute your phone or your computer when you're not speaking, and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And each vote will be taken by roll call. I don't even know if there's going to be any votes. All right, sorry about that. Continue, Ray.
Well, that was, that was pretty much it, so we could just move on to Article Six.
Article Six is the contingent budget.
Right, so that's going to be as printed. So we're not going to, we're not going to go down through each line item.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, I didn't see, I heard somebody, but I didn't see a hand, so I apologize. I don't know who said it. Matt?
Yes, Madam Chair, through you. So Ray, Finance Committee has a slightly different version of the contingency budget, so I'm not sure the best way to do that. Ideally, we would just talk through that tonight and agree on a unified version of that going into tomorrow. Alternatively, we could go line by line and discuss those things at town meeting. I'm, I'm not sure the best way that you want to do that.
Well, we're not going to go through them line by line. We're going to go, you get, by, by the time Saturday morning comes up, you're going to hand me an article that everybody agrees on. And that's pretty much it. So however that, however that you guys work that out, it doesn't matter to me, but the article that's handed to me on Saturday morning is the article that's going to get read, and it's going to have a dollar amount to it, and that's, that's it. So is that possible?
I, I think that's eminently possible.
Okay, so just, so just do this, so just do this, Matt. You know, you or Tim or whoever it is, just hand me the article that's going to be read with the correct number that everybody agreed, everybody agrees on, and that's the one that'll get read.
All right, so I think we need to, Madam Chair, I think we need to talk about that tonight so that we can get on, on board with that.
So, so, so what's the, what's the difference, Matt, between what I've got sitting in front of me and what you have?
So we have an additional one-hundred-and-five-thousand for fire personnel, so that is half the cost, six months, of the additional two positions that were recommended by the Fire Study Committee.
Okay.
And so there was some discussion within the Select Board meeting this week, and they, Tim had some concerns about hiring. So Finance Committee adjusted our kind of thinking on that, and rather than bring in the whole two positions for the full year, we, we bumped that back by six months to make sure that the chief had the budget that he needs kind of on day one to be able to bring in those two additional positions. So there was that.
I'm not going to fight you on that, Matt, you know that, but, but I want to make sure that everybody is in agreement in that. I don't want to go into, I don't want to go into, you know, I don't want Article Six to be fought on, on the floor. I just wanted...
Right, none of us do. And unfortunately, we've just sort of run out of time and we've been really trying, I think, both the Select Board and the Finance Committee and the Town Administrator have all been trying to collaborate on what the right numbers are and what the right message is for this contingent budget. So I, I think on the whole, there's that. The raises above two percent is something that Finance Committee isn't supporting, so I think we need to talk about those things. And the other sort of major one, what was the other one? Oh, we, we're looking to restore Nelson Park as well.
So Ray, just through the chair, if I, Matt, if you're done, let me just jump in from a ten-thousand-foot level and then... So Jen, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so the contingent budget between the Finance Committee and, and myself is twenty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars off. We, we like the idea that the Finance Committee wants to do the one-oh-five for the half position relative to timing for the captain, so we'll add that back in. So our motion of eight-sixty-three, three-seventy-five, I think, is twenty-three-thousand dollars higher than the Finance Committee. Some of the details that's required for an appropriation are not clear to me in what Matt sent to me today. So I, I'm still going to advocate for those positions as we have, you know, every eighty percent of our budget goes to salaries, and I can go through some things that I think maybe even, because we're trying to do things on the fly, right, like Finance Committee, there was, the two percent is two-twenty-four, but there was a one-twelve number, a hundred-and-twelve bucks for an adjustment to Sue that I would assume the Finance Committee wanted to put in, but I, I would want to keep that because that was in the original proposal pre-COVID. And I realize there's a lot of iterations because we had a, a number of dollars pre-COVID, and then we had a reduction estimated because of COVID. We made adjustments accordingly. So we got through that with Jay and, and balanced that out. I also think in the proposal from the Finance Committee, I think you might have double counted one line item relative to the, the school department. They need three-eighty-one to be restored, and then you put in municipal and school adjustments of eighty-six thousand. So I just don't, I think those details are the pieces. But again, it's twenty-three-one-fifty. You know, maybe Matt and I can, can work together to get that closer, but...
So, so the number is eight-sixty-three, three-seventy-five, and Matt, is that, is that what you agree with? Or are you concerned about where, how that's distributed?
I think Finance Committee had some concerns about how that was distributed, so.
Okay, so is that, so, but, but the eight-sixty-three, three-seventy-five, is that something you guys agree with?
So I...
And you can work on the, on the distribution with Tim?
So, Madam Chair, if it's all right, I'd like to just quickly do a straw poll with Finance Committee to see where everybody's at. So we're, we're at basically the same number. We've included the two fire positions, which I think we all supported. So I'll just, I guess the best way to do this is to just, anybody that is willing to support the number going into that, I'll ask for hands up.
Say the number again, Matt, please.
It's eight-sixty-three, three-seventy-five, Sue.
So, so it's a little bit more than what Finance Committee had agreed to last night, which was the eight-thirty-nine, so.
And that's including the over-two-percent raises?
That is, including at this point, the over-two-percent raises, but...
But not, I'm sorry, but not including Nelson Library?
It does include that.
It does, okay.
Fully restore. Matt, you want me to just run through the list real quick of what it restores?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
So one-twelve for the Finance Committee Secretary, that's a hundred-and-twelve dollars. The pay increase for the assessor, and I can get into the value add for having a, a long-tenured employee with a lot of knowledge, that's thirty-one-forty-six. The contention around the town clerk, that's ten-thousand-five-hundred, and if we needed to trade a horse, I'm using these quote-unquote earmarks. If we had to put her on a, a two-year plan to make her competitive to the market, we'd be willing to do that. Building inspector, that was nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars for an assistant field inspector that does the, the roof inspections, window inspections, those physical hard structures. I believe he makes fifty-one or fifty-two thousand dollars now, so the nine, nine-forty-three represents another one percent on top of the two. Highway personnel is a nineteen-hundred-dollar increase for staff under Paul. If you remember, Paul was the soar superintendent. We didn't have a DPW director for a long time, so we saved a lot of money for those years as the charter has that revert back to the TA. So we actually have a sixty-forty split between the soar department fund, which is not general fund, not tax dollars, it's just user fees. So we had some money saved there, and Kevin, we, we brought him up through the ranks, and he's doing well managing the crew and getting projects done. So that's what that nineteen-hundred dollars is representative of, with Paul advocating for him and Darrell. Darrell, who runs Parks and Cemeteries, makes less than Phil made in doing, obviously, more with less people as a result of the budget reductions. So we want to restore that one. Council on Aging is an interesting piece. They have an increase in terms of service to volunteers by twenty percent, and their budget's grown only forty-thousand dollars in seven years. Forty thousand is a lot of money, but considering it's less than one percent of your total operating budget, it's not a lot. Barbara's resourceful. She's, she's great at program and great at transportation, meals on wheels, bringing in the chef to bring more people in for Congress meals. Again, I could have lost this person to another community. Shoesbury was hiring next door with the same position, that's significantly more money. Obviously, all this was, you know, kind of pre-COVID relative to this discussion, but we're always in the mix in terms of increasing and retaining those employees. The library personnel was forty-one-oh-five, forty-one-hundred-dollar, forty-one-oh-five, and that's for additional duties for the current staff and the certifications that we talked about at the last meeting for the library personnel. I'm almost done. So that's forty-one-hundred bucks, and then recreation personnel, it's seven-hundred-and-ten. It's really part of a three-year performance-based pay increment for the recreation director, so that's seventy-hundred-and-ten dollars is reflective in our total number. We obviously agree on restoring the twenty-five thousand from expenses for Reserve Fund. We were, Finance Committee and I are off on the two thousand for GIS MIS. I would like to add that back in. The library expenses was eleven thousand. We had to make reductions to that, which, again, you guys were working on the fly through Zoom, so I'm not trying to cast dispersions here, but we missed that one. If that was one you wanted to keep in, we missed it under the proposal that you gave to me earlier today. And then finally, John Allen, the, the Economic Development Coordinator piece, I think Ed challenged us to really think about the value and the matrix around that. I can tell you that there's been over, commercial industrial property tax growth for the two years he's been here is up over three million dollars. Can I say it's all attributable to him? I can't. I can say it's attributable to a lot of things. I think he's part of it. I think the outreach he's done, the seminars he's run that have been at capacity, the PPE program through the COVID-19, he was instrumental in that. And I would also argue that the, the shepherdization, if you will, of the two recreational marijuana facilities on Route Thirty, he, he held their hands through the process as much as he could and advocated where, where it was appropriate. So I can't quantify that he's brought us thirty thousand bucks, but I know he's brought us more than thirty thousand bucks. So I want to add that back in. So again, that, that total is between the reduction of the Nelson Library and adding that back was a forty-one-thousand-dollar reduction from Nelson, and then the delta was twenty-six-one-fifty-five. So all said and done, there's some details in yours that we don't know where it filtered out, but delta was twenty-three-one-fifty. So that's how, what I would propose to town meeting to consider. Could, could I lose that? I'm sure I could, but I'll, I'm going to, I'm going to try to make that presentation and that pitch to town meeting.
Sure.
Okay, so if you guys are all set with that, with that number, then Matt, you and, you and Tim can work out the details.
Colin, if you, if you want to go through, Madam Chair, you got to ask.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Tim. I just had a question on your budget that went out today. When it came to the library expenses of eleven thousand dollars, that was an unfunded request that got put back in that the Finance Committee wasn't including in theirs. And then the other part of the library, how it's increased back up to fourteen thousand, I thought you were taking out the two positions that weren't going to be hired until FY twenty-two, and it appears that those two positions have been put back in. So would those two be that twenty, around that twenty-four thousand dollars worth of reductions that you are thinking are off because they shouldn't really possibly be in there?
The, I don't think the two people that we took out originally, that, you know, we're not going to accelerate the building project. But Becca, the forty, the four-thousand-one-hundred-five dollars does not include those two people for the last two months of the fiscal of twenty-one. Is that correct?
That's correct. It does not include those two people.
So what's the best way for us to answer Colin's question?
So the full fourteen thousand that is attributable to the library personnel in the motion, about ten thousand of that is two percent for all of those staff, including the director, and four thousand is the additional compensation for those two or three employees who either have received certifications, taken on additional duties, et cetera, that the library director has proposed receive more than two percent. So we've, we've completely eliminated those two new employees from FY twenty-one, given the timeline of the project. It's just not realistic to think about those people until the start of FY twenty-two.
So do you think we should also remove that eleven thousand dollars worth of expenses as well, since the project is delayed?
I don't think there was, the expenses are not related to the building project. That was part of the initial library director's request in their budget, and through the several iterations that we've had, it just had to get cut because we were, we were trying to, to meet the number, given the reductions from COVID.
Are we ready to move on?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So can I just, I'd like to just do a straw poll. Finance Committee, is everybody comfortable with that number? So hands up for anybody who is. One, two, three, four, five. All right, so we have a majority. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to move on then? Okay, Article Seven, Grafton Cable Television Budget. That's going to be read by Doreen. Article Eight is going to be read by Peter. It's Fund Twenty-One Capital Expenditure Budget.
And that's, and that's as printed, so that's, we're not, we're not going to go down through that.
Correct.
We'll have that on the screen as well, just so people know. Sorry.
Article, Article Nine is Ed, the Transportation Bond Bill.
Can I qualify that? I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead.
So just like with Chapter Seventy and UGA, the, the state is not fully ready to commit to all of our numbers that we're committing to now. So we're going to have the last number that we got from the state, the four-ninety-seven, three-eighty-two, as it's printed. I just want everybody to know that if that number were to change, we would have to make an adjustment in October, up or down. And if it's, if we find out in August it's lower, you know, obviously we'll adjust internally our expenses to, to match that true appropriation. But I need a number to please the accountant and just to, just to get it out and get it balanced, but we won't spend it if we know we're not going to get it. So I just wanted to say that because if Meridian told me today, he says, "That's, that was the number. It may not be the number." But I want to have a number because we... But I want to have a number because we want to be able to do projects. I don't think it goes away completely, but it could go down. But we'll watch it, so you don't have to have a special town meeting just to appropriate that money.
Barry?
Uh, Madam Chair, through you to Tim, I'm looking at the June twenty twenty warrant. Uh, Article Eight. And I see that you're going to oh, as an example, um, replace a pickup truck for forty-eight cents?
Barry, Barry, those are, those are accounts we're going to liquidate, so there's warrant articles that have balances in them.
Okay.
We're gonna use that, that's part of the three hundred and thirty-one, two ninety-nine you see, and then we're only gonna use seven ninety-four, one seventy-one for free cash. So all these articles that are listed here, those are liquidation of those articles to, to fund this capital plan.
That's municipal accounting, I love it, I got it.
Okay, any other discussion on Article Nine? Alright, Article Ten will be read by Donna, it's authorized board to accept and enter into contracts. Article Eleven, uh, authorized spending limits for revolving accounts, that will be one I will read. Article Twelve, Recreation Department Revolving Account will be read by Doreen. Article Thirteen, Fire Department Insurance Supplement will be read by Peter. Um, Ed will read Article Fourteen, which is authorized treasurer collector to borrow money. Uh, Article Fifteen will be read by Donna, which is unemployment compensation. Article Sixteen will be read by me, it's funding for transportation services from WRTA. Article Seventeen, um, will be read by Doreen, it's funding for police department equipment.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
Sorry, yes?
Uh, th- through you, um. Uh, so Finance Committee, uh, opposed passage of this because our concern was that if the contingent budget passes and the override passes, and this article passes as well as eighteen. We will have, uh, double appropriated, um, funding for that equipment. So, what, what we would like to consider doing is, um, just so that we can support this, um offer a substitute motion at town meeting, which would just say if, um, the contingent budget and override pass that we would not appropriate this money, so that we wouldn't be double appropriating it. Is that okay with you, Ray?
I don't think you can do that, so, um you know, the, the motion is, is to appropriate twelve thousand dollars, you're talking about Article Seventeen, right, Matt?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so the, the motion is to appropriate, um what you, what you'd really need to do is you'd really need to adjust that in October. Instead of saying, well, if this passes, then we're not gonna do this, and, and things like that. It would just be easier to, to remove that twelve thousand dollars in October. Um, that would be a lot easier.
So we're just gonna be, uh, tying that money up between the, that, this one and the next one?
Correct, yeah, that's all, it's, that's all it's gonna be. So it's just like a, you know, it would be like a normal change, uh, just like, uh Chapter Seventy money, Chapter Ninety money, things like that, if it doesn't come through you gotta adjust it in October, just adjust this in October.
Alright, so there's no way to make a motion to make that contingent? It's just like the contingency budget, so it, it only kicks in if, um, w- we pass the override?
Well, let me go over it with Ginny, and see if we can come up with some wording. Um, if we don't come up with some wording on Saturday morning, then we'll, then it'll go as is, and we'll change it in October.
Uh, alright, that's fine, so if, yeah, uh, that's fine, so if, uh, we don't get that substitution language, then we'll just kind of say our
It wouldn't be a substitution, just be an amendment to it, I'll just add on a sentence at the end.
Yeah, something like that would be highly preferable, because we want to support the, the spending, and we want to make sure that, um, those departments have the money that they need to buy that equipment, um, when they need it, rather than having to wait. Uh, but we don't want to tie the money up if we get that double appro- appropriation.
So, so Matt, let's make sure we talk about it Saturday morning.
Sounds good, thank you.
Madam Chair, I don't want to belabor this, but can I just
Sure.
Speak to these two, so the, they're specific articles. I, I, when you, unless you're thinking about re-appropriating that money someplace else now, in this town meeting. It, it just stays with the account as if it was in free cash or here. Uh, unless you're afraid of us spending it from the general appropriation and from the article. I would be kind of hard pressed to, you know, look anybody in the face if I spent it out of the general fund and then spent it again out of the article.
That's kind of what, that's kind of where the road I was going down, Tim, is we just, we just adjusted in October, and that's, and it's done.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess I understand the concern, I just, you know we would never, the money would sit there, whether it's in this, just like liquidating the other articles in, uh the capital warrant, we would, we would just turn this money back for liquidation, either in October or next May. If, if the budget passes and the, and the override passes.
Sure, yeah, I guess we were just looking for sort of a very, uh, clean, straightforward way to do it, that's all.
No, I can tell you that the board who's here now, who I work for, will tell me not to spend out of both places, and they will not let me to spend out of both places. So I, I don't want to laugh at it, I just, I would never do that.
Okay.
Right, um Um, Article Eighteen, Peter is reading, that's funding for the fire department equipment. Um, Article Nineteen, Ed is reading disposal of the property at twenty-seven Upton Street. Uh, Article Twenty is Donna.
Is there, is there a presentation?
Yeah, for this one, Chris McGoldrick will talk to the, the process we went through to get to the zone change, and obviously uh, Dave on the planning board will read, uh, their report. Obviously, by Article Nineteen, it's probably pretty dang hot, so we'll be expeditious, hopefully, uh, relative to that one, but I just want to let the, the committee know that Chris McGoldrick will make that presentation.
I'm sorry, can you clarify, is it before Article, uh, Nineteen about the disposing of the property at twenty-seven Upton Street, or is it just before Article Twenty?
They're, they're so interwoven, I think you could, he's gonna, he's gonna be up there. Obviously, Twenty's the zone change, the disposition of the land is, uh, preceding it, so I'm hoping they can do both at once. Not in terms of voting them both, but he can make a presentation to deals with.
Okay. Good, I'm just double checking, I don't see any hands. Alright, um Article Twenty-One, Acceptance of the Property at Ninety-three North Street, I will read that one.
Is there, is there a, uh, is there a presentation on that?
Uh, yeah, sure, uh, we have some slides, we want to recognize the family. We, it, yes, we do, but it will be brief.
Okay, uh, Acceptance of Property at Lottie Drive is number twenty-two, read by Doreen. Uh, Article Twenty-three will be read by Peter, it's the sale of surplus property. Um, Article Twenty-four will be read by Ed, it's deals with the CPC reserves. Excuse me, uh, Article Twenty-five will be read by Donna, it is the CPC Hell Farm Bond Payment. I will read Twenty-six, which is the CPC Grafton Townhouse Bond Payment. Doreen will read Article Twenty-seven from CPC, which is the Institute Woods Recreational Trail Feasibility Study. Um, Article Twenty-eight is, um, CPC, uh, Town Records Restoration Project. Uh, Article, I'm sorry, that's read by Peter, Article Twenty-nine, read by Ed, is CPC Lions Club Property Recreational Improvements. And then Article Thirty, we start the, um we start the citizens petitions, but, um, my understanding is that, um, Recreation will have a presentation at this time.
So on, as far as, as far as, um uh, presentations, um, I want them limited to five minutes. I don't want to go on for fifteen, twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes, nothing like that. Um, it's gonna be extremely hot that day, and I just, I, I want them to have five minutes. That's it, so, um, everybody do your best to get to five minutes, I'm not gonna be sitting there with a watch, but, uh I just wa- I just want things to move along very quickly. Um, if there are, yeah, if there are questions, obviously, if there are questions from the audience, that can go on. Um, I can't stop that, um, but if we can reduce the, the time of the presentations, that would be great.
Did you, did you, um, say, did you tell that to Recreation when they requested the, I'm not sure they're
I haven't talked to Recreation, I haven't talked to Recreation at all, I did, I don't even know, I, I don't know what they're doing, I haven't received anything from them, so.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Ray, I would prefer that Recreation present when the CPC articles come up and not prior to my citizens petitions at number thirty and thirty-one. I think it would make more sense for them to present at thirty-two and thirty-three.
Well, I don't know, I, you know, it's, it's what, it's, it's what they've got proposed. If they contact me and they say that they're gonna do a, a, uh, a presentation on Article Third, on Article, whatever it is, uh then, then that's when they're gonna do it, they're only gonna get one shot at it, so.
Right, so all I'm saying is, Ms. Thomas recommended that the Recreation present prior to my article. And their article is read later, so I was just asking that they present when their article is up and not prior.
So, so if somebody, if somebody can have somebody from Recreation, whoever is going to make the presentations, contact me. That would be great, and I can talk that, I talk that out.
Um, I will just say, when we put together this warrant, we talked about this, and the, the condition of of putting these articles before the CPC articles, was that Recreation would have a chance to make a presentation before these articles. Or I would not have agreed to have this order.
I believe they'll still
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Nobody discussed this with me. No one. So, we're gonna get this worked out before Saturday, because whether you want Recreation to do it before their article, or after their article, or during their article, or whenever, it's all gonna be approved by me. So, you know, I don't want to confuse the voters um, o- on any of this stuff. If we're going to, if we're going, if I'm gonna allow to discussion on all of these articles at the same time, then that's fine. But, just, just have, can you, if you can just have somebody from Recreation contact me, and just, just let me know, that's all. We can work it out, it's not a big deal.
We, we do have a message from Jen Anderson. Uh, Ray, I sent an email today confirming approval for a presentation, which Tim requested earlier, and asking where you'd allow replacement of the presentation, so. It's in your email.
Would she send it to?
It says to you.
Yeah, if she sent it to, uh, arneed@bjs.com, I retired last Friday.
Oh.
So, I didn't get it.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks, well, I semi-retired.
Madam Chair, we'll get the presentation to, to Ray ahead of time.
Yeah, that's all.
Ray, could we have your new email address while we have you here?
Sure, it's arneedcm@gmail.com. I'm still working, but and for BJ's, but not for, not as my other, my other job, so. Okay, next, next article?
Um, we have, um, Article Thirty-One is
Barry Smith has got his hand raised.
Oh, sorry, Barry?
Hi, uh, Jennifer, um, we have an Article Thirty and an Article Thirty-One, they look identical, are, are they different?
Uh, Colleen can answer that, she has her hand up.
So, they are slightly different, but ever so slightly, so I'm hoping we can just pass over, I believe it's Thirty, and go right to Thirty-One. And I will have a couple of slides for that presentation.
Okie dokie, thank you.
So just one logistical thing, Madam Chair, Colleen, if you could send those to Becca and I, so we can insert them. Because this, this will be displayed on a ten-by-seventeen Jumbotron, it'll have a computer in the unit. And there won't be, you can't plug and play, I'm gonna need that to be integrated into the PowerPoint.
Absolutely, I'll send them right out, it's gonna be short, one or two, nothing crazy, trying to get out of there with the heat.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Article Thirty-two from Lydia Bogart. Um, so I'm not sure, Ray, if she said she was gonna be there or not.
Uh, I think Lydia is gonna be there.
Okay. And then Article Thirty-three, uh, CPC Superpark is gonna be read by Donna. Article Thirty-four. Uh, CPC Superpark Borrowing, I will read. Article Thirty-five Cemetery Perpetual Care Funds will be read by Doreen. Uh, Article Thirty-six will be read by Peter, Fire Hydrants Grafton Water District. Article Thirty-seven will be at, read by Ed, Fire Hydrants on the South Grafton Water District. Um, Article Thirty-eight, um, is a citizens petition by Lydia Bogart.
Right, on, on Article Thirty-eight, it is, it is, I, I understand what Lydia wants to do. And she wants to change, um, the bylaws to show that the town meetings are gonna be on Saturdays now. It's not, it, it's, the, the citizens petition as written is not correct. And, um, I will suggest that, uh, that this be taken up in, in October. Uh, but it, but the petition that she has is not, is not correct, so as far as the, uh, bylaw goes.
Okay, uh, Article Thirty-nine is a citizens petition by Bruce Spiny. Article Forty, oh, sure?
I prefer to read mail.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Article Forty is a citizens petition uh, from Hangerani.
Can I ask, can I ask a question on this? Why do we have a citizens petition for road acceptance? Um, ha- has all the meets and bounds been done? I mean, this is normally put on by the town to, you know, to accept.
Madam Chair, if you like.
Sure.
Okay, so, obviously, citizen petition can come at any time if they're duly certified, so we had to put it on. There's been regular contact with Peter relative to what's not been done on, on that subdivision that need to be done before we accept it, so if he comes and makes the presentation, you know, the town is going to recommend me. DPW Superintendent, I'm gonna recommend that the town not accept this road because those things have not been resolved. So that's our position, he knows that position, but still move forward with the petition. Chris has been in contact with him on the deficiencies of the subdivision. The board would have to lay out the road at a public hearing ahead of the acceptance anyways, which we didn't do, because they didn't didn't meet everything they needed to meet, I think they will, it's just a matter of time, and maybe he was overly aggressive in trying to meet that timeline.
So, Tim, can we just, can, can somebody just talk to him, and just so we can, uh, pass this over?
Uh, Chris, Chris is charged with that, so we'll, we'll find that out tomorrow, or, or Saturday morning.
Okay.
I'm Chair.
Yes?
There's a couple of questions in the Q and A, if you want to give that some attention before we wrap up.
Yes, we're still have another article, I was gonna do that at the end of reading all the articles. Uh, Article Forty-one, uh, citizens petition, um, by, um, Ed, Crispy. So I'm assuming Ed will read his own as well.
Okay, and I just, Jen, I just want to take some time, just, just a couple of minutes, um, to talk about what's taken place as far as, as far as, um, uh, the meeting goes, and, uh, and all of the things. All the things that have gone into it, and Jen, you've been at a couple of meetings, Doreen, you've been at a couple of meetings, um, this has been the most planned out uh, town meeting that we'll ever have, hopefully, we never have anything like this again.
Ray, before we do that, can, I'm sorry, can we just tackle these questions, because they have to do with the warrant portion, and then we can Yep. Uh, will a copy of the warrant articles be available, or do we need to print them out before we go?
Uh, Madam Chair, the guidance, well, Ray wants to talk to it, they, they, we want to limit physical contact because of COVID. We'll have annual town reports there, um, that they'll pick up themselves if they so choose, so we were not planning on having them printed, at least from the town perspective, because they'll be on the screen.
And they will be on the screen, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, next question for, from Greg Mar, Ray, were you not able to work with her to correct as we discussed a couple of weeks ago? I think he is referring to the
Yes, he's, he's referring to Lydia's, uh, Lydia's article. Um, no, I have not been able to, uh, work that out with her. Um, but, uh, it, it's, at, at this point, it's just too late, so.
Uh, one question just came in from Lisa Rice, will the Finance Committee recommendations be on the screen as well?
If that's the, I, I, they printed those and those are available widely, right? I don't, what, Sue worked really hard on the distribution of the documents. If we can fit them on there and we have time to do it, we certainly can. But they're gonna you're gonna know it if they don't.
Sorry, Ray, you can move on with the logistics.
Okay, so I'm just gonna let Chris, uh, take care of this. Chris, uh, Chris Mead is on. Funny, same last name as me. He's been running, uh, he's, he's in charge of operations for Saturday. Uh, it's been quite a task and, uh, and he can explain very quickly, uh, what's gonna take place and, and how things are gonna go.
Uh, Madam Chair, through you to the group.
Uh, so, can everybody hear me? Yes, okay, thank you. Um, so basically what, what we have is, um, obviously outdoor, outdoor venue, uh, a bunch of different areas that we have to control, so we have come up with a plan um, for people to arrive at the meeting, show up, appropriately spaced while they're waiting to be registered and, and checked into the, in, into the, um, the area. They will be traveling through the basketball court area, um, to the left of the gym. Once they pass through that basketball area, they will be getting, um, they'll be getting checked in. They will pass through into now what is a, a controlled area. Um, all of the other exits, uh, will be blocked and manned um, so that people cannot come and go as they please, um, from, from the area. Once they pass through, they have the option of, of going to the gym, which will have the screen set up, uh, there along with a microphone, um, so that they may be able to participate in the meeting. Um, everybody else can head down to the field. Uh, on the field, the chairs will be appropriately spaced, um, and we can begin the meeting. The heat is obviously the issue here and, and, and one of the big concerns that, um, that everyone's kind of looking at, so we've addressed that in, in a couple of different ways. Number one, we will have, uh, oh, well, thank you, Tim. Uh, so, so this is, this is my rough, crudely marked up drawing here, uh, that'll be corrected later on tonight. We will have, uh, on the field, we're gonna have three, three cooling stations, one on either end of the field and basically what they're gonna be is big port of cool units, uh, along with some tents. Um, there'll be an, an additional one at the top of the, um, at the top of the bleachers, um, before you head down onto the field. Everyone's gonna be sitting at seats that are spaced at six feet apart intervals across the field with the large Jumbotron screen at the fifty-yard line. The selectmen and finance committee will be on either side of, of the podium. They will be underneath tents at tables appropriately spaced. Um, that's, that's really the, the gist and, and way that the meeting will be conducted. So some of the concerns that need to be addressed and, and have been addressed is bathroom facilities. So if, if you look at the map that Tim has, there, there will be several porta potties, uh, laid out at the end of the field and up by the gym itself. We will have, uh, in case of an emergency where it is very warm and very hot there on, down on that field, um, we will have a ambulance on standby, uh, that is representative of the Red Cross, that is, that's currently on the screen. Uh, we will all have, uh, MRC insert on, onsite as well as, uh, six members of the Grafton Fire Department to provide backup. So the way that I see this playing out is if, if there is a concern or there is an issue or somebody has a, a problem out on the field, people that will be dispersed across the field will be able to identify the issue. Um, they'll be dispatched and, and what will happen is the town will then, uh, we, we'll use a, uh, basically a four-wheeler mule um, to go, and if we have to remove the person from the field, we can remove them to the ambulance, um, that is at the end at the exit. Uh, hopefully, all of this planning and, and, and all the layout that we have here is, um, will be just that. We'll have everything in place and we'll never have to use it. Um, but at this point, this is, we have to kinda deal with the situation that we have and, and this, uh, heat struggle and heat problems are really the, the focus of, of what we're looking at. I think that's it. Uh, if, if there are any questions or, or concerns, um, from.
Just so that everybody knows, it's hard for me to see everybody, so if somebody has a question, um, oh, thank you. There are a couple of questions in the queue, but I will first go to this panel.
Jen, just, when Chris talked about a, a cooling stations, they're actually gonna be, uh, water misters so that you'll be able to, um, uh, stand in front of those misters or stand actually, you don't have to stand close to them, um, and get cooled down on those. Uh, the, uh, Fire Department will have two EMTs on the field at all times. Uh, we have the command post on the field right now, um, which is, uh, which is air-conditioned, um, but i- i- in enormous, excuse me, an enormous amount of planning has gone into this and we hope everything goes well. I think everything's gonna go well. It's, I, we, we have overplanned and overplanned and you know, everybody's done a great job.
Uh, Donna?
Ray, we've had a couple of questions about pop-up tents, whether or not people could bring their own and sit at the back of the field.
Yes. I got a, I got a couple of emails about pop-up tents and what I said to the people were, was do this. Bring your tent with you and we'll make a decision that day whether you can put them up and that's really gonna be based on how many people are there. So if there's room to put up a pop-up tent, I, it, that's fine with me, um, as long as we have the room to do it. It's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a different town meeting. It's gonna be a party atmosphere. It's, uh, I think we're all gonna have a good time.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could just add on to that relative to the tents and their location.
Sure.
We're, we're shooting this with one camera. That's all we can do from that press box. So we're up on those bleachers inside that room, so those tents, we, we really don't know you know, how high a tent is and how that'll interfere with the sightline to Ray at the podium. So that's, I just want people to just bear that in mind that right in the middle is probably not gonna be a place where they'll be able to be a tent.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, oh, Matt?
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, to Ray through you. So, uh, Ray, I got your email about, uh, reading the state of the town message. Um, Finance Committee met last night and, uh, voted that I should read the state of the town message. And I just wanted to address that with you, uh, tonight. Um, so if anybody wants to see the state of the town message, I'm happy to bring it up on screen if, if I could be allowed to do that. It's based on.
Matt, all you have to do is send it to me.
I'm, I'm happy to send it to you, Ray. We're gonna print it out. We'll make it available for people. It's, like, this isn't a political moment. This is just the state of the town. We cut it down significantly so that it's five or six minutes, um, but it's just, it's the, the pat standard state of the town message. So I'm just, I, I busted my ass this year to, 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 to get to here and, and I deserve to do this.
You and I have had, you have, and I have had this discussion. And, and send me the state of the town.
All right, yeah, it's, it's a non-political thing. If you don't wanna recognize me, Ray, what I, what I will ask for you to do is to just provide an explanation and just direct people to the document that we'll print out and make available.
We're not gonna turn this into a, uh, into a game, so Matt, send it to me. I will, I will review it and get back to you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna, Ray, there's some art, there's some questions in the queue uh, from Sherilyn Mitchener Reno. Will coolers be, for keeping water bottles cold, be allowed on the field?
Uh, yes, coolers will be allowed on the field. They're subject to inspection.
Okay, uh, will people, this is from Katie Brown. Will people be able to listen in their vehicles and then vote? How will that work?
Uh, they'll be able to listen on an FM channel that we'll have, uh, advertised and, uh, and as long as they're registered, they can vote. Keep in mind that if people are listening on their, on their, out in their car, the chances of you running up to raise your hand is very slim. So in, the only way that that would work is if we did have a ballot vote, which hopefully we don't. But we're not going to, we're not going to, uh, you know, we're gonna call the votes just like we normally call the votes, so, um, I gotta tell you, we're not gonna keep everybody happy. We don't keep anybody, everybody happy at a regular town meeting. This is gonna be worse, so. But yes, people can sit in their cars and then come up and vote, absolutely. As long as they register.
The next question was answered. I'm gonna miss that one, um. That one's a statement. Kristen Ramillard um, wants to, I know this is an impossible situation, but since people are six feet apart and outside, do you feel face masks are necessary? I feel like wearing a face mask in the heat is asking, is asking for somebody to pass out.
Face masks are absolutely required and you will be asked to leave if you do not wear one. Unless you have a medical condition that requires that you can't wear one.
All right, does anybody have any other questions?
It's a good thing I'm not running for moderator again. I probably wouldn't get elected after this one.
Madam Chair to Ray, um, on the face masks, is a bandana, you know, around someone's face except, okay, I just.
Yeah, you don't have to have a specific, you know, surgical mask or something like that, but you know, uh, if, if you looked, if you, if, watch the news or anything like that, um, you know, there are a lot of, there are a lot of situations where there's a lot of people and keeping six feet apart is, is our goal on the field. When people get up and walk or leave or something like that, we can't control that. Um, so it, it's better to have a face mask on and just take it off in the parking lot when you get in your car. But yes, any, any type of face mask.
Right, so for people listening concerned about the face mask thing, I'm thinking, but I don't know that a bandana, you might find somewhat more comfortable.
Yeah, yeah.
A little bit of airflow and doesn't feel quite.
I mean, my big concern is tan lines, so you know, it's, no.
People should be wearing sunscreen, Ray.
Oh, I'll have sunscreen on.
I see a hand up for a question. Uh, Barry?
Yes, uh, through you, Madam Chair, to, uh, Ray. How will the voting be conducted? Will you just raise a hand or will you stand?
Uh, no, uh, so with the, uh, with the, um, wristbands, ninety, ninety, ninety-two, ninety-three percent of the articles will just be raising your hand.
Okay.
Um, if it cannot be called, so in other words, it, so let me explain how, so both, so we're gonna have the gym and we're gonna have the, uh, the field. So Dave Robbins, uh, and Dan Conker are gonna be in the gym. Myself and Bruce Spiny, we will be on the field. So when I call for a vote, the gym will vote first. Dave will let me know, you know, up or down, and then we will vote on the field. A standing count, I mean, a stand, if, if we can't call it and we have to count it, then we will ask, just as we used to in the old auditorium, this section stands and we'll count it and then this section stands and we'll count it, but yeah, yeah, they have to be able to see that wristband. So that is, uh, that's the only way. So if we do have a ballot vote, we do not have to re-register. You have the wristband on, you've registered once, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Ray, can I just ask about the candidates for moderator? Um, are you gonna have them switch halfway through the meeting? Because that seems like a little.
No. Why? Why would I have them switch?
Well, because their positions are very different in terms of visibility.
I'm not here, I'm, this is not a political thing. I, I asked, I asked both, there's two people running for moderator, I asked both to be deputy moderators with Dave and I. I didn't, I'm not switching positions. I'm, it's not, has nothing to do with, with exposure. I'm not holding up a sign for anybody, so. Nope, not doing it, so.
Um, there's another question from Lisa Rice. Will family members be able to sit together or do they have to stay six feet apart?
No, you can sit, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have, uh, chairs, um, three chairs and a two-foot by, two-foot wide, I mean, three-foot wide by six-foot space. Family members can sit together, absolutely. And kids can come.
Ray, I got one question, if I today may. What is the total amount of occupancy with all the seats that you anticipate that you could accommodate for Saturday?
On the football field, uh, we can accommodate about nine hundred and eighty people. In the gym, we can accommodate a hundred and seventy-eight.
But Matt, Ray, we only have five hundred chairs on the field, there's so.
I, I understand, but, but I'm just, that, that's what it, that's what it lays out to. Um, I don't expect that many people. I don't expect five hundred people, that's for sure.
Uh, Barry?
Uh, Madam Chair, through you to Chris Mead. Uh, can you, uh, just tell me how the, the chairs and the, and the tents and all will be positioned? I know there's gonna be a camera in the, in the booth up above the football field. What's gonna be down in front of that?
Tim, do you have the layout? Can you pull that up? Can you pull up the other one from, from immediate? That shows the chair layout.
If you get too warm, you can just go jump in the lake.
Chris, that was, that was a text, um.
Oh, that was, that was an actual document.
Yeah, I.
I got that text.
So, so ba- basically what, just to, to answer your, your question, Barry, the, um, the, the layout is, uh, in an auditorium style, uh, seating arrangement. So you have a rectangular section of seats directly in front of the, the screen and then you have the other two sections angled off at the side so that, so you have the same viewing angles. The viewing angle on the Jumbotron is, uh, I think it's a hundred and sixty degrees if, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, so it's a pretty wide angle. Um, the chairs have been set up so that everyone will be able to see it and there's not really going to be, you know, a quote-unquote bad seat in the house where once you start getting to too far to the sides of the screen, you can't, you can no longer see it.
Physically, where will the screen actually be?
It's gonna be fifty-yard line right behind me, Barry. I'm gonna be on a stage, so they'll be right behind me.
Okay.
All right, I have a question in the Q and A, um, from Marilyn Kusher. Can people bring their own chairs?
Um, I had somebody ask me last week if they could bring their own chairs because it had, it had a, uh, um, an umbrella-type thing on it to, to keep them out of the sun and, uh, I said yes.
If I can interject on that, um, we're, we're going to have to keep an eye on those style chairs. Um, this is the artificial turf, um, so anything that's sharp, anything that's gonna poke into the, the turf and, and ruin that field uh, obviously won't be allowed if there are large attachments and in this case where it's a, an umbrella, uh, or a sun cover, um, they may be asked to sit towards the back up against the bleachers rather than out in the middle of the field.
Any further questions about the logistics of the meeting?
Hi, Madam Chair.
Yes?
Just for, um, through you through, uh, to Ray, um, when people are in the, um, in their cars, in the parking lot and then they hear of the radio, it's time to come and vote, is there gonna be a queuing area for them? Um, to allow them access to the field or where will they be staged if, if you have like forty cars out there with people just waiting to vote on any particular article? Where will we have them processed through to?
Well, I would, I would hope that if you were gonna, if you were gonna sit in the, in the, um, Well, I would, I would hope that if you were gonna, if you were gonna sit in the, in the, um, in the parking lot, that you would, once the article was called, that you would make your way towards, um, towards the field.
Okay.
Or the gym.
So if people are on the car, we just wanna make sure that if they're sitting there for town meeting, they, they actually get registered because they're not letting any on the floor and without a wristband?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, see, so you'd have to get registered first and then go back and sit in your car. Yep.
That's it. Thank you.
Anybody have any further questions? We don't see any. Oh, another Q and A. Justin Wood, since people can park at high school or municipal center, where would the ideal location be for handicap parking to, for attending town meeting?
At the high school.
Okay, any other discussions about logistics? Oh, wait, wait, the questions keep coming in from viewers. That's good, so that people understand. Um, will there be, um, this is from Jennifer, there's no last name, excuse me. Will there be a minimum amount of time allowed for us to get to the field before voting occurs? Oh, Jen Vaca.
Again, if you're sitting in the parking lot waiting for a certain article, once, once, you know, if, if it's, it's Article twenty-two, when you hear Article twenty-two, get up and go to the field. Don't wait until all discussion has stopped and then we're gonna vote because the vote's gonna happen. On standing counts, on, um, standing, and I'll say this, uh, because I said this the other day, and, um, on standing counts, when we have to count the actual vote because, because, because I can't call it, the doors to the, the gates to the, uh, field will be closed and the doors to the gym will be closed. And that happens standard, even if we're in the auditorium. So. So if you hear your article coming up, come on out and stand there and wait to vote.
Any further questions? All right, um, just to reiterate, registration starts at seven thirty AM. The meeting starts at nine AM. Um, again, special will be first. So, um, I do encourage people, you know, they're gonna try to get people registered as quickly as possible, but, you know, we are anticipating lines as they've gone over. So seven thirty, you can come and get your wristband. I'm assuming, Ray, at that point, they can even go home, right? If, once they get their wristband-
Absolutely.
They can go home or sit in their car or-
Yep, well, they could come back, you know, five articles ahead of time and get, get registered. But yeah, once you have that wristband, you have to keep it on during the entire meeting, but you can come and go as you please.
Okay, all right. Um, that is it. If, if nobody has any further questions, um, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I just wanna thank, I just wanna thank Ray, uh, Chris Mead for stepping up and helping out with this, uh, and the two moderator, uh, candidates coming in and helping out as well. Uh, Tim, uh, Bob Vitomah, everyone, I, I think they get, need to get some recognition.
I'll forget Dave Robbins.
Dave Robbins, sorry, Dave. I didn't mean to screw you, but really, uh, thank you all, uh, for stepping up, uh, and doing this, uh, keeping our town government uh, in operations. I know, I think I speak for all of us, we appreciate all the work you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, no, one last question came in, Ray, and I'm, I'm sure, I'm not sure you'll know the answer because none of us-
Does it have to do with, does it have to do with ice cream?
No. Um, Crikey Ramelard wants to know if there's an estimated time that we think this meeting's gonna last.
Yeah, I'll buy a lottery ticket. We'll, we'll see. Either I win the lottery or I pick the date. You know what? I think that we could finish this in two and a half hours.
Okay.
But I've been wrong so many times. Yeah, two and a half hours would be, would be absolutely great, uh, to finish this meeting.
Yeah, we, we know better than to try to predict these things.
Absolutely.
My, my prediction is three hours.
Well, we gotta bet, Dave.
Hey, Jen?
Yeah?
I just wanted to ask our chair if we were meeting after this meeting.
Yeah, I was just, uh, texting Stu, trying to figure out how we do that. So can, can we just leave the call open and we'll just continue our meeting?
Um, yeah, I think we can transfer host.
Okay, if you can-
Well, I mean, I'd have to double check with, with Becca.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Yeah, I can make you the host, Matt. I think, actually, you know what? I think Tim needs to make you the host.
Okay. I'll do it, I'll do it, I'll do it.
All right, thank you, everybody. I, I appreciate the accommodation.
So, Madam Chair, you're gonna adjourn your section and before I-
Yes, I, I need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn?
Uh, I didn't, all right, I just heard a second. I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, by roll call?
Charles and I.
Doc, I.
Fazio, I.
Yeah.
Thomas, I. Motion to adjourn has been carried. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, you have control now.
Thank you, sir. All right, let's just give it a minute.
You guys mind if I hang out and listen? I'm not going anywhere.
I, I don't-
Public meetings.
I really have nothing else to do with my night right now, so whatever.
Matt, I assume you'll have to start with the, uh, rigmarole reading and then a roll call?
Uh, I, we've already had that, so I don't know, do we need to do that? I'm happy to do it.
Continuous meeting, so I don't think we have to do that, Matt.
I'm gonna say we don't need to, we already took roll call.
Yep.
All right, uh-
Part of it, Matt, I'm, I'm just concerned because we did it as part of the, of the double meeting. And, and I really just think to be safe, because it is a public meeting, we should make it clear that this is now a public meeting of finance committee. I just don't wanna be in, in violation of anything.
Fair enough. All right, let's do it. Um-
Is that what you were raising your hand for?
Thank you, Donna.
Now you have a quorum of, of select board members.
I don't suppose you can bump me out to, uh-
To attendee?
Attendee, yeah, that's fine.
Peter actually here.
I, I can't actually. No, I can't do that.
He's on the screen.
Good to leave.
Should I kick him out? Pete, Pete, are you okay if I remove you? Uh, Sue Fiacca, what do we have on the agenda for this evening? We're just reconsidering?
Yes, there's, um, reconsideration of a couple of the articles. Article five, Article six, um, Article nine with the explanation, I believe we don't need to reconsider. Article twelve had the information about the Recreation Revolving Fund, if it wants to be discussed. Seventeen and eighteen, uh, you might want to review as a result of discussing, discussion with Ray. And that's all I can see.
All right.
Five and six are obviously numbers. Uh, twelve, seventeen, and eighteen are not.
Okay, do you have the updated numbers? For five and six? Well, we don't need to redo five, do we?
We have to check to make sure the number's correct.
Okay.
The number does not coincide with our recommendation, the motion number.
I'm trying to find mine.
All right, well, if somebody wants to pull up, uh, that number, um, I think we're in agreement on what those line items were, so I'll accept a motion to reconsider.
Does somebody have the newest budget update?
So if we go with the motion, stay with me for a second. The motion for Article five, that's where we're going to start, correct?
Yes.
Is a total of sixty-three, uh, million, eight-five-zero-six-seven-eight. Our, uh, recommendation, we actually didn't vote on Article five at all. We put a recommendation in and said that we would, uh, provide our final recommendation at town meeting. But the number that we agreed with in principle was six-seven, six-one-five, three-two-nine.
Does that coincide with the budget, um, update that Tim sent out to us a couple of days ago?
I can't answer that, Sue.
I don't, I had them, I can't find where mine are.
I had six-seven, six-one-eight, one-four-four, I think.
I remember it was six-seven, but I don't know what rest of the numbers were. Let me see if I can find-
But what he sent a couple of days ago probably isn't relevant, so is it in the motion?
I thought a couple of days ago that was the latest update. It was six-seven something, I thought.
The total appropriation, including the sewer receipts and transfer from, um, what the motion says, from sewer bediments for a total appropriation of six-three-eight-five-zero-six-seven-eight.
I don't know if it matters, but in, in the email Beck had sent, she did say that these are the most updated motions, that they had just been updated even a few minutes ago, and they could even still change. And if any changes, that she'll update us immediately.
So I think we have to go with that number.
Yeah.
Barry?
Uh, the five pager I have with the standard line items.
Yeah, we can't see that.
Yeah, I'm just, it's, uh, it shows the personnel and the expenses and the sum. It's the town admin asked for six-seven, six-one-eight, one-four-four.
That's the number that I had.
Yeah.
But that's a massive discrepancy. So that's what's in the budget book that we got, and that's the three point six increase from last year. The sixty-three million number is-
Is the motion.
But, but that doesn't jive with, it doesn't make sense that we would go from a sixty-five million dollar budget last year to a sixty-three million dollar budget this year. Right?
Well, because the rest of it is in the contingency budget.
Not all of it is.
Okay.
We didn't cut that much out.
No.
There's no way.
Well, I'm reading the motion and I'm reading our, our recommendation, so I, I can't, I can't give you more than that right now.
What about the debt payments? I know sometimes they do the budget net of the, um, of the debt service. No, that's not in there. Okay.
I recommend we go with the updated budget table, which is the sixty-seven, six-one-eight, one-four-four.
That's what I thought it was. Anyway, when I saw it.
I think maybe their motion is, uh, incorrect, is what I'm guessing. So what was the number? It was sixty-three, six-one-five?
Six-three, eight-five-zero-six-seven-eight.
So they cut four million out?
That doesn't make sense to me.
No, it doesn't.
Matt, could you please give the number that you have again? Six-seven what?
Six-seven, six-one-eight, one-four-four.
Thank you.
Okay, can you just text Becca? I'm sure she'll answer the question.
I, I think so, too.
I don't have her number.
I don't have Becca's number.
Do you want me to email her really quickly? Yeah, I bet she'll answer it. I just, I'm trying to figure this out myself. I'm trying to add, like you said, sometimes they pull stuff out, so I'm trying to-
We've got so many different numbers in the-
I know, I know. It's, that's why I think if we just go right to the source, she'll probably tell us what's going on.
Okay. Um, let's move on to the contingent budget. We've got a number for that.
I'm still concerned. I'm happy that, um, Tim agreed to the two fire positions for the, um, moving from January on. Um, and that, um, Nelson Library. The only thing I have, I mean, it was a straw vote, but I still have some concerns about all those raises.
Sue, I do too, but look, the state's gonna cut funding in two to three months anyways, and I, I get it. It's small dollars, it's, uh, we gotta take the long view here. It's right around the number that we had planned on anyways, and-
Agreeing with you. I'm just stating that I'm concerned about those, and I did a straw vote, voted for those, and I will go along with that because the two fire positions were put in. And I understand where you're coming from, and I will go along with that, but I just want people to know that I just wasn't happy about that.
Thanks, yeah. Um, I appreciate that. Uh, go ahead, Irene.
I, I would like to do the same thing, go on record as saying that I am, you know, very much opposed to the raises that exceed two percent, but I don't want that to be the hill we die on. Um, there's so much else at stake. I, I don't like it, I'm not happy with it, but as an overall package, it's compromise. Let's just go forward. We have so much to do. But I'm with Sue. I wanna be on record as saying, I, you know, I oppose that portion of it.
All right.
The whole package as presented.
Thank you, Irene. I'm gonna let you go, Dan, and get yourself on record.
Uh, I, I would be content with, um, you know, saying in our recommendation that, uh, you know, just spelling this out and saying that this is, uh, the compromise we came to and that we, uh, we recommend passage of it, uh, just, you know, noting concerns.
Okay.
I think we've done that in the past for, for some other things that we didn't feel were worth, uh, making a, a big fight over, but just had concerns who wanted to make known.
Yeah, we'll just need to discuss the language on that if the rest of the committee feels the same way. Um, any other comments on that? Okay, I guess I'll just ask the committee, does everybody feel like that's, uh, generally the, what we wanna do? Just move forward with, uh, some recommendations that note concerns about, you know, uh, the, the raises and, um, but move forward with the number.
I don't have a problem with that. Just double check with Tim to make sure that the numbers jive.
Okay.
If you would do that, please.
Got it. Yeah, I thought we had pretty solid numbers for tonight.
Well, it doesn't hurt to double check.
Of course. So I'll take a motion on that.
Excuse me, uh, Matt. Can we have a, a little bit of formality here? I'm sorry, but, um, we, can we have a reconsideration of action taken on Article six, please?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor by roll call?
Robbins, I.
Q, I. Roy, I.
Beth, I.
Kusher, I.
Swanson, I.
Off tonight, motion carries. Okay, so we're reconsidering. Are we reconsidered, I guess? So I'll take a new motion.
Is that the number eight? I had it here and now I lost it. Is that the number? Got it, Colleen?
Eight-six-three, three-seventy-five.
I'm sorry, did I have a motion?
And a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor by, oh, go ahead, Barry.
Uh, question?
Of course.
The eight-sixty-three, three-seventy-five includes the fire one-oh-five and, uh, Nelson Park forty-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, was Nelson Park forty-one?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. All right, any additional discussion? All in favor by roll call?
Robbins, I. Cool, I.
Q, I. Roy, I.
Beth, I.
Kusher, I.
Swanson, I.
Off tonight, motion carries. Okay. Did we get any information back from Becca?
I keep hitting refresh hoping, but, um, not yet.
All right, let's move on to-
Can I just ask, since Donna and Ed are both here, do either of you guys have Becca's phone number? You could possibly shoot her a text?
I didn't know what the number is.
Well, we don't have her phone number, but I didn't know if Donna or Ed, Ed shook his head, no, but Donna doesn't either. Okay, so I, I'll just keep hitting refresh- So I, I'll just keep hitting refresh until, see if she writes back.
All right. We, we also, we've also have a half an hour on Saturday morning, so I prefer, prefer not to wait, but we can wait. That's an, that's an important one. Um, all right, uh, can we talk about, uh, Article Twelve? So I sent through some additional information from, um, Jen Anderson today. Is there any appetite to reconsider Article Twelve?
Can you just recap it again real quick?
Sure, it's the setup of the revolving fund for rec. And, uh, if, if you want, did everybody have a chance to read through that?
Very quickly.
Okay, so I'll just summarize quickly. So there was some concerns about, um, why we were setting up a revolving account and not setting up limits as we typically do, we do with revolving accounts. What she's asking to do actually in that, uh, motion is to convert this from, uh, one type of account to another. Uh, the original revolving account had a limit of ten thousand dollars, and anything beyond that ten thousand dollars would get rolled back into the general fund. What this mechanism does is it sets up a different, slightly different type of account so that there's no, um, return of that money above, uh, ten thousand dollars.
So that just rolls over? Correct?
It just stays in the account rather than returning back to the general fund. So historically, what's happened is anything above that ten thousand dollars gets returned back to.
It's gonna roll over. It'll roll over.
It will roll over, correct.
Okay.
So she does not do the turn back dance.
Correct.
No.
Just not with the revolving account, with the regular budgeted items she would.
Correct.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. And does anybody want to reconsider based on that information? Okay, then we'll just leave it. Um, seventeen and eighteen. Uh, do we need to discuss those for reconsideration? So I, I just, uh, in the way of letting everybody, so I did, uh, email Ray. He got back to me right away. He's gonna have that discussion with Jenny. We're gonna talk about this, uh, on Saturday morning. Hopefully he'll just have some language, uh, we can reconsider, um, on Saturday morning and just change our recommendation, as long as we've got that language, I, we, we can think about that.
Sounds good, Matt.
All right. Very good. Uh, what else do we have? Sue, was that it, Sue?
Do you want to talk about state of the town? That's, I mean, um, on the agenda.
Uh, so Irene and I worked on it, uh, today. I think we got to like ninety-eight percent. Um, I'm pretty happy with where we're at. Uh, it's largely what we did last year. Um, I, Irene was amazing, actually. And we just, uh, spent, I don't know, an hour last night, um, and we just shortened it by about thirty percent. And then I went through again today and shortened it by another, I don't know, ten, fifteen percent. I, I'm trying to get it to that five minutes, uh, to try to just be as short as possible. So, um, I think largely it reflects what the committee was, um, trying to reflect, um, in our discussion earlier, um, this month. So other than that, uh, I'll send it to Ray if everybody's happy for me to do that. Um.
Irene, you got all the slides done then?
Yes. Yeah, it's just three of them.
Yeah.
I think I can call them up. Yeah, they're on this computer. Does anyone want to see them?
I would, I waiting it to see the third one. We saw the first.
Yeah, why don't you bring them up? Do I need to promote you?
Yeah, give me a minute to find them.
Okay. So we have that going on. Uh, I'll email that to Ray. I'm pretty sure he'll let it go, but we're gonna print that tomorrow morning. Um, so we'll provide the same four hundred copies. Uh, we fit it onto the two pages, so we'll just have a single duplex. Um, if Ray doesn't want me to read it, that's fine. Um, I'll just ask that he direct people to look at it, um, and they'll just read it. And that's what we'll do. If, if ever there was a meeting to not do the state of the town message, this, this one is it.
Okay, I'm waiting for it to download.
Well, I'm just going to make a statement that I think Ray is not being neutral. I think he's making a political move. And you're the chair of the finance committee, and you should have been allowed to do it. I just find that unbelievable that he's not letting you do that. But that's my opinion. And I just wanted to state it, that I think he's not, as a moderator, staying neutral.
Well, especially since other people who are running are in fact being allowed to read things at town meeting. If he was applying it consistently, I'd say, yes, that's the new rule. That's what we're applying. The problem is that it's not being applied consistently, consistently. That's, that's my objection.
I, I prefer not to get on this road. I think, uh, I made my, uh, opinion on this clear to Ray. Um, we had our discussion tonight. I'll send it to him. He'll make his decision. I, I abide by the moderator's decision on how he wants to run his meeting. All right.
I understand that. I just wanted it in the record.
I appreciate that, too. Yeah, it's not something that I love either.
Matt, if you're the host now, I need you to, um, allow me to do the screen share.
Okay, can you request it? Let's see, how do I do that? So Irene, uh, I just made you a host.
Okay.
So.
Here we go.
Good.
Okay, so this was, I, I printed them up a little bit. So guys, this was slide one. It shows our reserves and stabilization and have, while we do have money, it's a decreasing percentage of our budget. And that, of course, is, you know, concerning.
Yep.
So that's, that, that's the point of putting that up there. We do state that again. No one's gonna read the slide. It's just kind of up there for people to look at while it matches the narrative. And the next one, oops, here we go. Okay, so, um, proposition two and a half creates the structural deficit. Revenues, you'll notice the small arrow go up. And I simplified. If there's no new growth and no change in property values, we cannot increase our revenues more than two and a half percent, regardless of how much our costs go up. Oops, sorry. And then the big arrow showing that over the last, um, five years, uh, the raises alone, no new hires, are three-point-nine percent on school salaries. We would need to get the equivalent number for municipal and health insurance has gone up almost six percent. You can't keep going up in your costs. And by the way, those three items together are eighty percent of the total budget. If your costs are all going up more than two and a half percent, but your revenues are only going up two and a half percent, and you can't make them higher, you got a problem.
Are you sure on that three-point, point oh-nine percent?
Yes, I, 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 what I did was I took that right off of Jay's budget, where every year, if you can go back, I think he goes back to like twenty-twelve. And he says for each year, what each year's raises, again, this is only Step Lane and Cola raises, okay?
Lane and Cola, okay.
For existing employees, how much those were. Now, some years it was a little higher, some years a little bit lower. This is the average over five years.
I thought that was higher, but okay. Um, I'll verify that with Jay. Um, I would just take out municipal salaries. But I'm, I'm happy to just do that tomorrow. I'll check with him on.
Get the number. So if we don't have the number, then it has to come out.
Yeah, okay.
Pick up municipal salaries.
Okay.
Why, Matt?
Uh, I don't know that necessarily the municipal salaries are going up that much higher than two and a half percent.
Over the last five years, I can almost guarantee it.
All right, well, let's get the number. It's fine. Uh, go ahead, Barry.
Um, Irene, the, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to Irene.
Come on, Barry. We don't do that.
We don't do that.
Will that display well enough on the Jumbotron, or will you need to make it bolder and darker?
Um, I can make it bolder and darker if you think we need to.
Uh, yeah. Also, um, he indicated that this is not gonna be a flash drive kind of thing, that you're gonna have to get the stuff to them in advance.
Right, we have to do this by tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I'll do that. And I'll get a new copy too, on that.
Thanks.
And your third slide, Irene?
This was my third slide, Grafton at a glance, home values. Median price of a single-family home in Grafton is three-hundred-ninety-thousand. The state average is three-ninety-five. The average price of a home versus the median price is four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand. Uh, tax rates were sixteen-fifty per thousand, were the two-hundred-and-fifteenth highest out of three-hundred-and-forty-four towns recorded. And our median household income is one-hundred-thousand-six-hundred-and-five, which makes us the eighty-sixth highest of three-hundred-and-fifty-one towns.
Wow.
Uh, Irene?
Yep.
Uh, the I thought the single-family home versus just plain home was the other way around. I thought the, the medians you had were for all homes included, and the average you had was for a single-family home.
Uh, let me double check.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have that sheet with me where I did the actual, where I wrote that down. I'll look it up and make sure.
Okay.
Um, okay. Any other questions on this? So again, this'll just be the backdrop for the kind of full, uh, state of the town message. Um, it's about a page and a half at this point. I read through it today. It was about six and a half minutes, I think, so if I can cut, if I can cut more out, I will. Go ahead, Sue.
Nice job, Irene. I like.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Irene.
Okay, so let me stop my share. Oops. You know, there's a way to do that somehow. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Um, Becca did write back, and I just sent it to Sufiaco and Matt, if you wanted to pull up on the screen to see her response.
Got it. Uh, how did you send it to us?
In an email.
Uh, okay.
Idiot.
Yep, hang on a second. Uh, I'm just gonna read it. Uh, the way the budget article is read in Article Five, it does not include non-appropriated expenses as they are appropriated elsewhere in the budget. It also doesn't include sewer budget, as that is funded by enterprise funds, and that's called out separately in the motion. So the number on the floor for Article Five is the operating budget number less sewer cost.
And that number is?
You don't have it.
Uh, we do. It's the sixty-three. Sue, what was the number?
Okay.
Okay. All right. So I will accept. Uh, go ahead, Barry.
I have to ask, uh, municipal accounting, whatever you call it.
Of course you do. It wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a FinCon meeting if you didn't.
The idea of not including non-appropriated items in the, uh, not in the budget. And yet they're going to be appropriated. So.
It will be in it, Barry, be in the motion, those other numbers, along with the number for the operating budget. So it'll all be there, so people will see it.
Okay.
Okay.
But I thought I, uh, okay, never mind. I'm done.
She, she wrote again. Um, she also did say she's ha, they having, um, an accountant firm double-check everything tomorrow, and they'll let us know. But she said she should have clarified that you can follow the math by viewing the budget document on the website, on the town administrator's page under budget documents. That is the latest version. That includes the cuts of the hundred-and-ninety-thousand.
Good.
Possibly we should wait until, um, Saturday morning.
To get an updated number?
Yeah.
You guys want to do that? We've got a half an hour. All right, let's do that. Fine. Do we want to talk about the language on Article Six for our recommendation?
French.
No, Greek.
Matt.
Municipal accounting. It is all Greek to me.
Go ahead, Dan.
Uh, there is a question in Q and A if you want to just get that real quick.
I will get it right away.
Yep.
Oh, let's see. We have two open questions. Lisa writes, will someone else be willing to present if Matt is not allowed to because he's running? This report is so important. The finance committee is the only non-elected neutral committee. It is important. People hear from you. So Lisa, um, the committee voted last night that I was to present the state of the town, uh, and also commented that, uh, if that wasn't gonna be allowed, that we just won't, uh, deliver verbally, um, the state of the town message. And that's why we're printing it out, and people will have it in their hands, uh, to read, which is something new. Um, but I think people are gonna have some time. So that's the way that we're gonna do it. Uh, Sean, uh, Chantel, let's see, should the select board members exit and re-enter using spectator? Nah. I'm we're so far along. I'm okay with everybody just staying. It's all good.
Look at the chat.
Look at the chat, okay?
From Mary Smith. Holy moly.
Um, I don't, I don't see anything in chat.
I don't see anything either.
Okay, I.
I do.
In front of me. Uh, she wrote, hello, not certain if it is okay that I provide a comment to the slides. Would recommend removing the descriptor only from three-point-zero-nine-percent raise description. I responded to her and said, thanks for the feedback. Appreciate it and valid point. So I will make that change when I go to, uh, fix up the slides.
Good. Oh, I see it now. My chat window's over here. Okay, uh, very good. Okay, uh, yes, Heather.
I just, the, the three-point-oh-nine, you said that was the average. I didn't look at the slide. I looked at it quick enough. Does you, do you say that that's an average?
Uh, yes, I say over the past five years, but I can make it more clear.
Okay.
That's clear.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, yeah. So we'll, we'll fiddle with that a little bit. What we might want to do is combine the, the schools in the town, um, if, if the town is in fact higher, to just get kind of a whole budget. Look at the, um, the amount that, you know, our compensation is going up year over year across the combined budget.
The most important point is that the increases are larger than the revenues, and we, we're not a company. We can't raise our prices.
Right, exactly. Okay, um, good. Uh, does anybody have any language they want to suggest for Article Six recommendation?
What did Ray say he was gonna talk to Jenny about?
He's, he's gonna talk to Jenny about Articles seventeen, eighteen, to see if they can just add a little bit of language to, uh, essentially prevent that double appropriation scenario.
Okay, so on our, on Article Six, Matt, I would say that, you know, obviously, we're, you know, we're recommending passage, and then in our explanation, the finance committee, um, you know, approves passage of the package. You know, even though we have reservations about individual portions of it. The important thing is to move forward with the override.
Hmm.
It's a start.
All right, so rec, finance committee recommends the, the passage of Article Six.
In the amount of.
Yep.
Yeah, and the amount of. And what's the amount? It's.
Eight-six-three-three-seventy-five.
Eight-six-three.
Three-seven-five.
Three-seven-five, okay, um, good. What do you guys really want to say? Tell me.
I think we need to say something to the effect that the finance committee and the town administrator reached a compromise.
Oh, I like that.
Okay.
I don't know how to phrase the other, because there's some things we, we're still a little bit concerned about what we were willing to compromise on it.
I think you say it like that. That sounds nice, that while we were concerned about the increases above two and a half percent, we were willing to compromise to allow for the inclusion of the two fire personnel.
Uh, can you say that again? That was good. That was really good.
That was.
Um, while we were concerned about the raises above two and a half percent.
Two percent.
Oh, yeah, two percent, sorry.
Yeah.
Override.
All right, uh, the committee, uh, are concerned about, were concerned about the raises above two percent. Yep, and, and anything else?
We were willing to compromise so that we saw the inclusion of the two additional fire personnel in the contingency budget.
Right.
Something like that.
Oh.
Is that coming for you, Barry?
I don't see them.
Who's got the tweeting birds?
Oh, you know, that might be me.
Is that you tweeting?
I, I am sitting outside, so let me, I'm gonna hit you.
That's okay.
I thought you were in the library.
You have great bookcases down in your deck.
Read that back to us.
Yeah, hang on a sec. Yeah, hang on a sec.
Okay.
Okay, so this is what I, the finance committee recommends the passage of Article Six in the amount of, the committee were concerned about raises above 2%. But the committee felt that adding the two positions recommended by the fire study committee was a reasonable compromise.
With the town administrator. I think we need to say finance committee, town administrators came to a compromise somehow.
We, this is the override.
Correct.
Article.
Yep.
Do we recommend, yes, we should go for the override or no?
No, we're not. That's not our job. That's up to the voters to cast their ballots, Barry.
But we make recommendations.
You're muted, Irene.
We make recommendations to town meeting. This is not something that is on town meeting for any discussion or vote. It's on the ballot for the 23rd.
This is just the contingency budget.
Correct.
The amount that we want added to the budget.
Does it represent the right services? Is it funded properly? That's all we're concerned about.
Yep.
Okay.
Barry, if you want to advocate, you go cry on the rooftops and tell people to vote for it or against it, depending on how.
Fell off the rooftop. Not, not me, thank you.
All right.
Barry, I would say this, by recommending that we go for a contingency budget, I believe we are saying in effect that yes, we support the override.
The reason I bring this up is I have had a couple of people comment to me that they looked, they actually looked at these warrant articles and they couldn't find the word override anywhere.
Yep, that's, that's, people are a little confused and it is what it is. It's a public education thing. That's, we don't need to concern ourselves with that right now. So, all right, so I have finance committee recommends the passage of Article Six in the amount of eight sixty-three, three seventy-five. The committee were concerned about raises above 2%, but the committee felt that adding the two positions recommended by the fire study committee was a reasonable compromise with the town administrator.
Sounds good.
Everybody happy with that?
The inclusion of raises above 2%.
About what?
The beginning where you say they were concerned about maybe the inclusion of raises above 2%.
The inclusion, I like that.
And I, I would just suggest saying salary raises, just so it's perfectly clear for people who have not been following along.
So, yeah, that makes sense. Inclusion of salary raises above 2%, but the committee felt that adding the two positions to fire department positions recommended by the fire study committee was a reasonable compromise with the town administrator.
I, from that wording, I don't know if it would necessarily be clear that we were asking for those positions and that was the compromise.
We did ask physicians.
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying I don't know if that wording makes it perfectly clear. But I'm not sure what, how else to. Maybe.
Matt, can you bring it up on screen?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the best way to do that.
You'll be such an expert, expert on Zoom by the time.
Yeah, Zoom really isn't my jam. I do. All right, so.
Not Microsoft Teams.
I do Microsoft Teams. All right, here we go. My sharing is disabled. All right, somebody's got to make me a host. And that's you, Irene.
Okay, so what do I have to do? Sorry.
Bring up the attendees.
Participants, yep.
Yep, hover over me, go to more and make me host.
Make host, there you go.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Nope, no worries.
Trying to read the email and do this at the same time.
All right, there it is.
The committee was concerned.
Maybe the committee felt that the town administrator adding the two fire department positions was a reasonable compromise?
Oh, I, I have a, an idea. The committee had concerns about the inclusion of salary raises above 2% and the exclusion of the two fire department positions.
There you go.
Recommended by the fire study committee. I'll give you a second.
Two fire captains?
Do we want to say that? Fire captains, they are captains, right?
Yeah.
And then, but felt that the inclusion of both was a reasonable compromise with the town administrator.
But the finance committee. But. FinCom. It is Greek.
See, why don't we just make it? Feels that the inclusion of both is a reasonable compromise with the town administrator. Okay. Finance committee recommends the passage of Article Six in the amount of blah, blah, blah. The committee had, had concerns about the inclusion of salary raises above 2%. And the inclusion excludes, and the exclusion of the two fire captains recommended by the fire study committee, the committee finance committee. Finance committee feels that the inclusion of both is a reasonable compromise with the town administrator.
Like this.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to quit sharing then. Very good. Is everybody happy with that?
Yes.
All right.
Do you think maybe saying a reasonable compromise with the town administrator's vision, just so it's, to make it like slightly less personal? Because it, I, it just, it, I'm just, it feels a little bit like it's like Tim really wanted this. And I, I feel like saying it's about his vision kind of makes it more about the ideas and not about the people.
I think you're overthinking this, Dan.
Okay.
I like the recommendation the way it is. I mean, this is what we did. We compromised with the town administrator. Period. I don't think we have to think too deeply into this.
All right, I'm fine either way.
All right, so do we need to vote on this?
Sue shaking her head, yep.
Then I will take a motion.
I move that we accept the wording of the recommendation for Article Six.
Yes.
As just seen on screen.
As presented. I have a motion and a second. All in favor by roll call.
Robin's eye. Ooh, I.
McQ, I. Roy, I.
Meth, I.
Cause your eye.
Once and I.
Off tonight, motion carries. Okay, do we have any other business? If not, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor by roll call.
Robin's eye. Ooh, I.
McQ, I. Roy, I.
Meth, I.
Cause your eye.
Once and I.
Off tonight, motion carries. Thank you all. I appreciate it.